This is the August 26, 2014, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville, and I welcome each of you here. This is, we have a nice turnout of citizens of the city here, and we always like to see people who are concerned about their communities. So, we're glad to see each of you tonight, and as we have the public hearings, when you have an issue to address regarding one of the agenda items, then please go to one of the microphones on either side of the room and give us your name and address, and we will be happy to hear what you're saying. I do ask that, as you speak, as you're, as people in the room speak regarding each issue, please listen to what each speaker says. We'll be doing the same thing up here, and we, in the interest of time, we like to try to not have people repeat the same thing over. So if your neighbor is concerned about a certain issue in your neighborhood, then you don't have to restate that, because we will, we will be making notes and hearing everything that goes on, and we certainly do like to take what your concerns are to That being said, I would like to introduce the members of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to start over here with our newest member. Just give your name and tell us just briefly what you do.
My name is Carlos Manizus. I'm a project manager out on Reston, Arkansas for Logza.
I'm Steve Strickland, Strickland Custom Homes. I'm a home builder.
Hello, I'm Les Tillery, Fuquann Partners Architects.
Vince Dickens, Army Contracts.
I'm Janet Watson. I'm retired from building and developing, and now I'm a grandmother professionally.
Thank you, Janet. Hard to follow up. Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Peggy Richard, Realtor.
John Lyshevsky, District 3.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
And we have several other members of the City Planning Department and the staff of the City of Huntsville here to aid us as we go through this meeting. I'd like to take just a moment to mention a sad occasion for the Planning Commission and for the City of Huntsville. Our former chairman Crawford Howard passed away week before last. He was a member of the City of Huntsville Planning Commission for 21 years, and he served as chairman for 11 years. During his time on the commission, he served and performed the duties of his office in an exemplary manner, and he rendered a great service to his community, not only with his service on the Planning Commission, but with his service in many other areas throughout the city. He was an active member of the Huntsville J.C.'s for 15 years, the Huntsville Citizens' Police Advisory Council, and the North Alabama Officiating Committee. He was not only a great asset to the commission, but to the City of Huntsville as a whole. He was well-respected. He was loved by all who knew him. His many contributions will be forever remembered and appreciated by so many in this city. On behalf of the City of Huntsville Planning Commission and planning staff, we wish to express our deep and sincere condolences to the Howard family. Our first item of business is the adoption of the minutes from July 22. Has everyone had a chance to read those?
Yes.
Move it forward.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Public hearings, as I stated, as I call each public hearing, you will have a chance to go to the microphone and make a statement. I do ask that you be concise in your statements and stay on the point. And we'll start with item one, Mark C. Smith Drive subdivision Phase 2, a resubdivision of lots 1 and 2 of Mark C. Smith Drive subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to comment on item one? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item two is McMullen Cove, Braywick, Phase 3, and Sanders Hill at McMullen Cove. Is there anyone here to comment on item two, McMullen Cove? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item three, McMullen Cove Silo Hill, Phase 1. Is there anyone here to comment on McMullen Cove Silo Hill, Phase 1? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item four, Montesano Court, Phase 2, a resubdivision of lot 9 and 10, and a part of Laura's View, a minor. Is there anyone here to comment on Montesano Court, Phase 2? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item five, Nature's Trail, Phase 2. Is there anyone here to comment on Nature's Trail, Phase 2? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item six, Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase 4, a resubdivision of Lot 1 of Farley Farm. Is there anyone here to comment on Oak Grove at Farley Farm?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Would you go to the microphone? Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ryan Sanini, 12705 Oaks South. Of course, it's Huntsville, Alabama. My zip code's 35803. I do have one question regarding item number six. The previous design of this subdivision was based on lot frontage size. So each street had a different frontage size, 90 feet, 80 feet, and 70 feet. So my question is, for Phase 4, those three that I mentioned were Phases 1, 2, and 3. For Phase 4, what is the lot frontage size?
Did you have a chance to look at the plat?
I did. It wasn't obvious when I, when I looked at it.
Okay. Is the engineer here? Michael, can you enlighten us? Pardon?
90 to 95.
90 to 95 feet.
Okay. Roger that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak regarding Oak Grove at Farley Farm? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item seven is Parkside Town Center. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Parkside Town Center? Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Our next item, item nine, is broken into three parts. Part A is, the item nine is location, character, and extent. Pardon?
Can we delay eight?
Oh, did I skip eight? Oh, I did. I am so sorry. Thank you. I checked off eight by mistake. Okay. I am so sorry. Our next item, item eight, which I skipped, is Pebble Creek, Phase 3, at River Landing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Pebble Creek, Phase 3? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. And that brings us now to item nine. Part A is Maynard Cooper Pedestrian Bridge. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Maynard Cooper Pedestrians?
Madam Chairman, I would like to speak. My name is Mark Russell, President of the Huntsville City Council and Representative, District 2. We, I rise to speak in favor of this. It will keep a local business in the downtown area and help them expand, which will keep our downtown vibrant. It will encourage, keep, encourage private investment in our downtown area, which is very important to the city's future plans. And as far as I can tell you, I have had no problems with surrounding residents. We have met with several of them at various meetings as we've gotten to this point, and they all just seem to be fine with the design and the walkway. So I encourage the Planning Commission to approve the walkway tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell.
Madam Chairman, I'm Evans Quinn Levin. I live at 1403 Monterey Drive, Huntsville, 35801. I serve as the Chairman of Downtown Huntsville, Inc. I'm here on behalf of Downtown Huntsville, Inc. to speak in favor of the project. Chad Emerson could not be here tonight. Our CEO, Chad, is working on another very important project downtown. You know, one of the, really, the primary mission of Downtown Huntsville is to ensure that we create an inviting and vibrant downtown that is inviting to our citizens and others that hopefully they will come downtown, and more importantly, they will come back. You know, part of that is through entertainment, but clearly, it's not just about entertainment. We need boots on the ground during the day. We need to be supportive of our local employers downtown, our private employers downtown. I ought to know this, but I don't, but I'm going to guess Maynard Cooper is probably in the top 10% of the private employers downtown. We view this as assisting them in expanding downtown, growing downtown, so we are very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn Levin. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding the pedestrian bridge, Maynard Cooper Pedestrian Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item B, Maple Hill Cemetery Edition. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Maple Hill Cemetery Edition?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'm Mark Russell again, and I speak in favor of this. We have worked it with the residents, and the plan, I think, is a good plan for the city and for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding Maple Hill Cemetery Edition? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item C, Annandale Trail Access. Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, for the third and last time, I rise to speak on this. Many of the citizens that live on Annandale Trail have concerns about this, and I think they just need an explanation. So I'd ask the Commission, if, at this time, if you could ask the Planning Department to explain this issue, and then they may want to speak about it after they have received an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Michael, or, who has?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, okay. Well, I was going to call on a member of the city to go over this first, and then go back to public hearings. Great. Thank you.
What this is, is a proposed plat, the, excuse me, a proposed trail on a subdivision plat that allows access to walking trails. And what we're looking at is the proposed trail at the end of Annandale, starts here, and works its way down through the two property lines here, and joins up across the creek to the existing trails. This plat was recorded back in 2002, and has a note on there that allows for such access as long as it's located in the easements. This proposal allows the trail in the easements.
Thank you, Mr. McGuffey. Yes, sir.
We ask this from the gentleman's question.
We, well, yes, this gentleman has the floor now, and we will have, we'll continue the public comment. Yes, sir, would you give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Harold Blanks, and I live at 2235 Briar Cliff Road.
Is your, is your microphone on, Mr.?
Yeah, now it is.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, closer to it. I have a direct interest in this project. Let's see, it appears that what is going on is the conversion of part of my backyard to public property. I own 1.1, 1.2 acres, and I have a house on it. And what, what the Planning Commission is, looks like it's doing, is making access on my property to the public. Now, I bought the property, I pay the taxes on it. I do not want public, that piece of property converted to public property, or any part of it. And I, there's another way to do it. That's very easy, if I could approach this gentleman here.
Yes, sir, you can.
I have the same thing you have.
As long as, we all need to hear what you're saying, so.
There's, what, what I'm saying is, there's some access to this creek over here that is, would be very easy to do, and you won't have to say boo to anybody, because you don't, you don't cross anybody's property. Buy that property there, straight access to there. Why would you, why would you want to come in here all this way and disturb myself, disturb Dr. Fiero's property? Uh-uh.
Well, first of all, if you see here on the screen, you can look and notice that the plat, plat note 7, I'm going to zoom in and let you read it. It clearly states that your lot has an opportunity for a public trail system in these spaces that are designated. So with approval by LCNE, with the city, the trail system is allowed. So what this is doing is allowing you to see the proposal and understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I don't want you doing it, and I will fight you. I guarantee you.
Jim, would you, Mr. Blanks, before you, before you go sit back down, would you zoom back out and, and let me be certain which lot is yours?
That's the first I've seen of that. Trying to zoom out here.
Okay. Control minus. Okay, I don't see the trail on there.
So we'll go to the page, you want to see the page with the trail?
Yeah, I want to see the proposed trail there. Okay. Is, now, the black line coming down that crosses the blue line that has curves in it, is that across the back of Mr. Blanks' lot?
That's across Dr. Fiero's property.
Okay. And where?
Down here, it's across my property.
So this is your property here?
That's right.
Okay. So is it on the, on the back property line between the two?
It is.
Between the, between the lot and a, is that an easement in there?
Right. What has happened is this lot here is now being built on, and obviously, prior to that, it's never been developed, and so the trail would just go down this gentleman's property here and jump over. And now that he's building a structure, we're going to locate the trail in the easement along the shared property lines here and get back across the creek.
So that, if I understand it correctly, the trail is not coming out of the easement?
No, the trail is absolutely in the easement.
On that lot, but maybe not on the adjoining lot? The one where it crosses the corner?
Yeah, you can see here that says open space and utility and drainage easement.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So it is, it's still in the easement. Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Let, just, just one moment. Do you have any further comment, Mr. Blanks?
Well, I.
Wait, I need you to go to the mic. Sir, I need you to be at the microphone, otherwise it doesn't get picked up for the record.
I've just, just never, I've never understood why in the world you would want to convert private property to public use. That just seems totally dishonorable to me. I would never do that. If I was on that, if, if you owned the property, public commission that I own, you wouldn't be sitting up there, you'd be standing right here where I am.
Thank you, sir. We, we appreciate your comments, and we certainly will take that under advisement, what you say about it.
I appreciate that very much.
We have to follow whatever the law is on it, but, but we certainly appreciate you bringing that up.
Madam Chair, it may stand to reason to have Jim further explain open space and UND easements for the public.
Sure. Utility and drainage easements are on every piece of property, and they allow for access from the utility department or the city to repair, fix, or add infrastructure needs, sanitary sewer, water, power. And this easement happens to have an application for a trail system, for the land trust trails and citywide trail system.
Thank, thank you, Jim.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Oh, wait, I'm, who said, oh, yes, Carlos. I'm sorry. Sometimes I.
Is his solution a viable solution?
His solution is a viable solution in regards to this lot being vacant. I believe this lot is for sale as well. So if the purchase of the property were to happen, they could absolutely use the lot to access the trails.
I guess my question was, if, if his solution that he provided keeps the trail off his property, is it a viable solution that can be done?
Well, his solution would be to cross somebody else's property.
No, it's not true.
Let's, let's proceed then with the public hearing, and I don't know if Mr. Dalen or this gentleman. Yes, sir, I think you were next.
My name is Damon Fiero. I live at 2250 Briar Cliff Road, and would probably be the person that is most heavily impacted by this trail. While I, in some, some ways, I do agree that there needs to be some sort of public access there in that general vicinity, but I believe it should be done in the light and spirit that is most beneficial to the homeowners and the community. The way it's been done, I think, is less than desirable. There's these easements that exist, but there's no rules, there's no regulations. I've asked, over the years, several questions about the easements, as far as if some hiker were on my private property and fell, and it is a very difficult terrain, who would be liable? And despite several years passing, nobody from the city has ever gotten back to me clarifying who is liable. So I think the sum total of that is, is that the local homeowners have that liability for a hiker on a public trail. And I've asked several times for them to clarify that or indemnify me and take that liability. That's issue number one. Issue number two, privacy. This trail is going to cut right through the back of our properties, where our homes were built so that we could have large windows to look out of our homes. Now we will be having to put curtains to prevent probably an increased amount of traffic through that back area that will now take away our privacy. While true, there is an easement, and that was unbeknownst to me when I purchased the property, because I've never heard of such a thing. But at any rate, this project here will actually intensify that easement. And I'm not sure that was the spirit of the original plot, or the original developer, was that to someday intensify it. Fourthly, there's a security issue, and through that area, there have been things that have been done over the years. The most simple of those, people will take their dogs through there, and I'm a big dog advocate, but they'll take their dogs through there, not on a leash. There's no signage up there to prevent them from letting their dogs off. I have five young children, and I have to be constantly cognizant that there are big dogs running wild through there. The other issue of security is HPD has run several less-than-desirable raids in that area for adults doing things they shouldn't be doing there on public property. Not necessarily on that trail, but on the trail right there off Governor's Bend. And they've made several arrests there. And I have five young children under the age of eight. I really don't want just whoever wants to hike through my backyard doing such. And there is, as Mr. Blanks pointed out, there is a better solution. That solution, which I think would be fairer to the entire city, would be to use the end of Mountain Brook. There's a lot there, it's for sale, there's areas where they can put some parking, they can put the appropriate signage. The grade is less steep, so it'd be safer for people. Let's see. And then Mr. McGuffey mentioned that every property has easements on it, and they do. But I don't see the city planning on running trails through the rest of Annandale. It would be convenient if they had a trail for me, if I wanted to take my kids up to Annandale, to cut through some of the neighbors' homes. But those easements are only for drainage, and so unless we're going to have easements for people to traverse everyone's property, I think it's an unfair burden to the property owners at the end of the street, and particularly when there is a viable solution on the table. Now, I know that solution's going to cost the city money, but I do read the paper, and I do understand that, that somebody made a very great deal on Stone Middle School, and now the city has the money somehow to help them landscape it and maintain it. So the city obviously is not in desperate times. They have the money to help a brewery. I think if they're going to do that, they should help the people of that region have a nice, safe trail with parking and signage, and. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much for those statements. Mr. Dalen?
My name is Mike Dalen. I live at 387 Ripple Lane, Hampton Cove, 35763. I'm the Chairman of the Board of the Land Trust of North Alabama. Have been a longtime volunteer with them for more than 20 years. I was around when this developer happened to put this idea toward the land trust with the idea that eventually there would be a formal trail. So you can speculate on what he might have wanted to have done, but I know what he wanted to have done. He wanted to have a connector trail up here to get to the mountain. We have, the land trust has more than 6,000 acres that we own or manage here in, in North Alabama. We have more than 45 miles of hiking trails. We don't, we have a lot of public use, we have more than 1,000 members, hikers, bikers, some people just like to see it up on the mountainside. This spur will help get another access point for the widely and heavily used trails that we have on Huntsville Mountain. It connects up Huntsville Mountain, which we connect to Montesano, and also to Green Mountain, almost all the way to Diddle Landing. This little connector will, again, provide another access point connecting many, many green spaces and parks owned by the land trust, owned by the city, owned by others, and just helps get the public out on public lands and enjoy it more. And I hope you'll support putting this spur in. If there's a better idea, I'd be all for that. But right now, I know this is in the plat, and I know that's what was planned 15 years ago, and this came up. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dalen. Yes, sir.
May I comment on that?
Yes, sir. We, normally, we don't take, take comments, and I would ask, you know, that as this meeting goes forward, and we have a lot of people from different neighborhoods, be certain that your comment is relative to the issue at hand, not to any, any particular person.
Well, I appreciate his comments there. However, the land trust does not own that land immediately adjacent to my property. That is city property. And so I don't know if the city has plans to convert it to land trust at some time, but it is city land. The city purchased that land back there. And so, and to his point about it being a valuable source to the trail system, I would agree. But if we're going to do this, then we need to do it right. We need to put a large parking lot, so all the citizens of Huntsville can come and enjoy it, not just the people who live on Annandale or Briar Cliff or Mountain Brook, but all the people of Alabama. And that means a large parking lot, that means increased security in that area with police patrols, that means signage, that means rules. There's a lot more to it. It's inappropriate for the city to say, hey, listen, that yard over there, that's how you're going to get to the land trust. Just, just, just make your way through it. That's our trail. That's inappropriate. The city should not do that. The city needs to find a parking lot that is viable for a number of cars to use that trail. Sure, and I am more than willing, and I will go on record to say this, I will sell the city my house at the price I purchased it, which was a good price. You can tear my house down, you can put the parking lot there, that would make wonderful trail access, and I would support that. So there's a few viable solutions that, that. So there's a few viable solutions that require the city to, I think, do their due diligence, and to have a reasonable standard of what a trail should be. It shouldn't be, hey, let's just put it in this backyard.
Thank, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding the Annandale Trail Access? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name's Dwayne Satterfield, I live at 2300 Big Cove Road, which is very close to this. I'm also the vice president of communications for the Huntsville Track Club. We're a 15, 1600 member organization who bring a lot of races into the city, Rocket City Marathon, Cotton Row, Mountain Mist, a lot of other races. I just wanted to say, as a neighbor, or as a person who lives in the neighborhood, part of the reason I purchased my house where it was, is knowing that I had trail access to the Land Trust. The Land Trust does back up against the Annandale and the Briar Cliff and Mountain Wood neighborhoods, which they can clearly see, the trail runs right down the edge of the creek, and you can see into the properties there, so privacy is, you know, it's kind of a question anyway, because the Land Trust butts up against the property. And it's clear to me in the plats that this was designed by the developer to have access, for us to have access, and that was an asset to this neighborhood and why I moved in there. Furthermore, I'm also the adopt a trail coordinator for the Huntsville Track Club, and one of the things we do is police the Land Trust area, keeping it clean. When we see trash, when we see things that shouldn't be there, we report them, and I would definitely continue to do this as long as I live in that neighborhood. I agree that we want to be open to other ideas, to be fair to the owners and to the access points, but there's several places around the Land Trust where there's a single point trailhead entry without a parking lot. It's just the way the Land Trust is set up, and where the trails enter and exit. But again, like I said, I think it's clear to me from the plats that this was thought about 15 years ago, and I think it's a, I think it's a very workable solution, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Satterfield. Okay, one more time.
While I agree with what he said, is that, yes, it is nice to have access there, but it's unfair when the city, this should be access for the entire city, so we don't just do it for the elite people who live in that area. The city functions to provide services for the entire city, and if you cannot provide a safe parking lot so that everyone can enjoy it, then we shouldn't do it. It shouldn't be just for somebody who lives in the neighborhood that they like to run on that trail. It should be for everyone in the city. And I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think that the citizens of that area would like the traffic, so they essentially want their cake, and they want to eat it too, they want it both ways. They want a private trail for the local neighborhood without any of the liabilities. The other thing is, Mr. McGuffey, can you explain, is that Land Trust property, or is that city property? Immediately behind.
Property here?
Yes, sir.
I don't know the answer to that, actually.
Well, I've looked at it in detail, that is city property.
Okay, that's right.
See, and the city, you know, every time I've called when there's an issue, they don't even know who has jurisdiction over that, whether it's the Parks and Recreation, whether it's the police, you know, nobody knows if there's signage out there, which there's not, there's no rules, it's just been this area, that land that the city owns that they've neglected. And I don't think that it should be detrimental to the citizens immediately around there. I think let's find a viable solution, let's buy that property at Mountain Brook, and let's put a parking lot in there, and let's open it up to the entire city. That's option one. Option two is, let's go ahead and I'll sell you my house, we make that a parking lot in the trailhead, I promise you, I will sell it to you, I will put that in, we'll do the contract tonight if you'd like. We tear that house down, we put a parking lot there that's large enough for the city to use, and we make it a viable trailhead.
May I ask Mr. Dalen to clarify about ownership of that track, or your relationship with the city on that track?
I don't have the plot maps with me right now, so I'm like him, I don't want to say one thing if I don't know it. But I will say that if the gentleman on the right would take a look around the country, he would find out that trails and greenways increase property values for the most part, and we do have a lot of little, up to 20, 10 to 20% in many areas. If you look at most of the Realtor ads around here, we had some of the same concerns about greenways in the early days, and now they are heavily advertised when a house backs up to Land Trust trails or property. That is considered an asset, not a disadvantage. And finally, again, if there's a, if there's a better way, we'll be looking at it, and we don't have to have huge parking lots for little trails that may have only a person or two every day or every other day coming through it. We have many, many small, five, four-person parking lots, so it depends on the crowds that are going through. This one, there just won't be that big a crowd, but it provides folks, runners, hikers, with another, with another access point.
Thank you, Mr. Dalen. Yes, sir?
Yes, Edward Jones, I live at 2313 Annandale Road, I am directly adjacent to the trailhead, and I've been there for four and a half years. We do have a hammerhead which provides a little bit of parking there, the road had dead ends, and there's no driveway at the end, so there's a little bit of parking there. We never see a large quantity of people, but you see people crisscrossing the mountain, coming from the north side all the way through and going out Big Cove, and you'd be surprised how many people use it, but we have never had a problem with parking, nor have we had a problem with anything that involved the police, the four and a half years that I've been there. I have walked this, and I may be probably the instigator of why we're here tonight, because I get all the complaints of everybody who comes down there now sees the no trespassing sign and the fence that is there, and I've been trying to spearhead and get the community back what we have had for the last 20 years that we have subsequently lost.
Ned, can you tell us where your, where your lot is?
I dead end, right at the end of Annandale.
Pardon? At the end, on the left?
Yes, ma'am, right there, that's correct.
Annandale, okay. Okay, and is that, are people using that, are they going up through there in spite of the fact that it's not?
They go down the gravel driveway that is the house that is currently being developed, and it's right in the path of where we previously accessed the trail there. And this is really just trying to reconnect us back to that point.
Okay.
And the position of where it is where it is, was trying to be respectful to all the property owners who were there, and put it to where it had the least visibility to anybody. I've also walked it with the Land Trust, and this is the most walkable and most travelable by everybody in terms of the terrain there. The terrain, when you get down to the lower level lots, is extremely steep in some areas. The empty lot that he speaks of, yes, is fairly flat, but there will be a house there shortly, or at least at some point in time, and we'll lose access there, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak regarding the Annandale Trail Access? Yes, sir?
My name is Frank Zimmerman, I live at 600 South Green Mountain Road. I don't live anywhere near this, but I do hike the trails. And I have at times had trouble finding places to park when you hike the trails at a popular time, when other people hike the trails. If there's any possible way to get a large parking lot, it does give better access, and that's all I want to throw out, that's just that idea.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman. While we have people here who are so familiar with that area, and Mr. Dalen with the Land Trust, I would say, does anyone else, I've asked a lot of questions, but does anyone else on the planning commission have questions that you want to address specifically, or to Mr. McGuffey? Is there anyone else to speak regarding the Annandale Trail Access? Okay, I see, okay, yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Ken Arington, I live at 10018 Shadowwood. I don't live in this area at all either, but I am a taxpayer here in Huntsville, and what the one gentleman said about four or five people using this, sort of disturbs me a little bit, why are we going to spend our tax money to develop this stuff if only four, if it's only going to benefit four or five people? It makes no sense to me, that's sort of a waste of my tax money unless you throw a parking lot in it, or unless you make access for other people like myself, so I can take my labs up there and take a walk on the trail or something like that. Otherwise, do any of these folks that live up there mind me parking in their driveway to go for a walk on the trail at that trailhead? I would say you probably wouldn't want me parking in your driveway. If this is just for four or five people, like the gentleman said, he admitted it, four or five people use the trail, why are we spending my tax money? It's not fair to me as a taxpayer to pay for something for that little bit of use, it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that no tax money will be used, we are volunteers, the Land Trust is volunteers, we will be building the trail, there will be no city money for that.
Okay.
But the city spent money to buy that land immediately adjacent to my property, so that city money, taxpayer money, has been used. And so either we do it right, and we do it for the entire city of Huntsville, and we put in a parking lot and a viable trail, to just leave it for just the local people who like to hike on those adjoining streets, is just, as he says, it's just not right for the entire city of Huntsville, and we need to act in the best interest of the city.
I understand that, I don't mean to cut you short, but I think that we understand those issues. And if someone has a new issue to bring up regarding this, we'll hear it now. Did I see a hand? Yes, ma'am.
I am Nancy Blanks, and I live at 2235 Briar Cliff. If you move the screen over, it is the largest lot you'll see up there, that is my lot, I do believe. It looks a little strange, but as far as visibility, I have complete visibility to where this is proposed for. This is my backyard. Now, we're on a slope, yes, but it is landscaped, and this is my backyard, where normally I don't see people. Right now, a house is being built at the end of this area, and I think this is what has brought this about, because the workers have seen a sprinkling of people going through, and they wonder what's going to happen when the new people move in the house, and there's people sprinkling through their yard. Well, that has happened from time to time, but the situation of making this, when we bought our lot, we knew there were easements, we came from the south part of the city, over on Horseshoe Trail. If you haven't heard of that, that was made public when two people decided to turn their lots into public displays at Christmas time. And even the lot, the street was closed, the city closed the street on one side, so when we, we lived on the opposite side of the horseshoe, but when we came home, we had to go all the way around and be sure we passed the house, get in line with all the people, and to get to our driveway, which was just off the way. So I'm well aware of things that can happen, but when we bought this lot, we understood that all of the easements would be for electrical and drainage, there would be nothing else, electrical and drainage, and we have our electrical underground. We have a terrible drainage problem. We have spent an enormous amount of money trying to correct, right now, we have a crew over there trying to correct it, because it is a hillside, rain comes down, and we realize that. But as far as, someone made the statement that this was not visible from anybody, but it is completely visible, because it's all the way across my backyard, why would it not be visible? So, but the same token, you know, that's open to my house, because I didn't anticipate anybody living in my backyard. So I just, I just wanted to address that one point. If there's an alternate way to do this, plus I didn't see where they were going to park either, if they run up there from someplace else, you know, that's different, but that needs to be taken into consideration, I do believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Okay, is that, is there anyone else to comment? Annandale Trail. Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Okay, our next item is Shawty rezoning. I think, Ashley, are you getting the PowerPoint ready?
I'm going to do the Google Earth first.
You're going to do your PowerPoint, yes.
And then I'll let this gentleman do his PowerPoint.
Yes, I'm not ready for public hearing yet on that.
Road, and on the north and south sides of South Village Square. The property is, the proposed rezoning property is approximately 15.5 acres total. The property owner would like to request a rezoning of the R2A portion of their property to R1, which is consistent with the single, surrounding single-family zoning, and that area is shown in the green portion. And the area that's highlighted in orange is the proposed rezoning portion. The proposed rezoning also would like to request the C1A portion to C1 only, which would shift this portion south on the south side of South Village Square. The current, the existing zoning of this property has been in existence since November 1974, and it has not changed, so the C1A has been in existence for quite some time. The proposed rezoning would not only reduce the current high-density zoning for residential, but it would also reduce the amount of commercial that is currently present.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Do you have the exact figures on the exchange of acreage on the commercial zoning?
Yes, the current C1A zoning is approximately 5.65 acres, and the proposed C1A to C1 is 4.44 acres, which is a difference of 1.21 acres.
That's less than?
Yes.
Less than, okay. Thank you. Okay. I think we're going to proceed just a little bit different on our public comment portion on this, because we have a PowerPoint presentation. Mark Prill, is he here? Are you Mr. Prill? I have asked Mr. Prill to keep his presentation as brief as possible and still cover relevant points. He represents the Green Mountain Civic Association, and so I'd ask everyone to listen very closely as he does his presentation, and then when we, when we have individual property owners or interested parties speak, I'd like you to, to take into consideration what has, what we've seen in the PowerPoint, and try to keep your comments to something new and relevant that we haven't heard. Mr. Prill?
Good afternoon, I am Mark Prill, I am the president of the Green Mountain Civic League, 5228 Riverview Drive in Huntsville, Alabama, and I represent...
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry. Green Mountain Civic League, but I'm also speaking...
I'm sorry, would you start over, Mr. Prill, because we're recording this, and if you're not speaking directly into the microphone, the, it doesn't get picked up on the recording.
Mark Prill, president of Green Mountain Civic League, 5228 Riverview Drive in Huntsville, Alabama, and I represent... Mark Prill, President of Green Mountain Civic League, 5228 Riverview Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. Represent both the Green Mountain Civic League and also speaking on behalf of the Preserve at Clayton Pond Homeowners Association. Would like the members of the Green Mountain community that are represented here today to please rise. And thank you. And in keeping with desire to be fairly brief, I'm going to constrain the presentation. Primary purpose, we're here to sway the planning commission to oppose, sway the, or oppose the proposed Green Mountain rezoning as it's currently structured. We'd like to dissuade Mr. Friday from pursuing commercial development on Green Mountain. And we would also like to find an amicable and a viable path forward. Couple representative comments on the slide for those people from whom we have elicited comments as part of a petition effort recently. We did have a general membership meeting a couple of months back in which we allowed Mr. Friday to come and be our guest speaker, who initiated the proposal or proposed it for us in front of that community to advise the community. As a result of that, we went through and had a discussion after Mr. Friday departed. We came up with a resolution you see up here on the screen, which has been submitted to the planning commission. We agree with the proposal to rezone the current R2A zoning to R1. We agree with the proposal to rezone the current one, C1A zoning to R1. We do not support rezoning any other property to C1 or C1A. And again, the signed version, both myself and Mr. Jeff Bachman, who's the president of the Preserve at Clayton Pond Homeowners Association. For the Green Mountain rezoning, we are sensitive to the complexity of this situation. Figure this would be a lot less contentious than the last one. We understand that by accepting any rezoning, we're establishing the precedent which exposes us to potential future rezoning requests. We also understand that asking the planning commission to reconsider existing zoning is an unusual circumstances. The "and" that goes along with that is exceptional circumstances warrant exceptional action. A decision to go with existing or rezone commercial zoning on Green Mountain from this point forward is effectively irrevocable. We want to take the necessary time to address the issue fully and get to the best, right answer, consistent with Huntsville's overarching long-range planning initiative associated with the big picture. Eliciting community input before we move forward, realize that this may be contrary to individual developer desires, given the situation. At a summary level, the original decision to zone R2A and C1, C1A may have been right for the times four decades ago. That decision is wrong for today, as it is any plan to rezone and retain any commercial zoning on Green Mountain. A decision to allow that commercial rezoning is effectively irrevocable. The likely failed commercial experiment poses an untenable downside impact to the Green Mountain community. We do not need commercial. We do not want commercial. And we absolutely don't want to be saddled with the same empty storefront issues being dealt with in the valley. We did generate a petition that we have circulated through the Green Mountain community. To date, 271, this was effective as of about noon today, Green Mountain residents, including several couples from the Inspiration Point on Green Mountain Development, have signed the petition and said no to commercial development on Green Mountain. As shown in the last bullet, the current count represents approximately 155 homes. That's approximately 70%. And 3,820 was the last count I had cumulative resident years, which averages out to about 14 years residency per individual for those 271 people that currently reside on Green Mountain or own property on Green Mountain. Our recommendation to this forum, the commission, is vote no on the current rezoning proposal. The greater good is served by acknowledging and honoring the overwhelming community opposition to commercial development on Green Mountain. We'd also like to enable a neutral broker to help determine an equitable and a non-commercial zoning solution. Again, representing both the Green Mountain Civic League and the Preserve at Clayton Pond Homeowners Association. I'll leave you with one last quote. "I choose to live on Green Mountain for the beautiful tranquil place it is. Let's not encourage it to change. It is a gem. We do not want to see it destroyed." Commercial zoning, commercial development, empty storefronts with a likely failure with all of the retail space, the groceries, Publix, Star Market, Jones Valley, commercial is non-viable at the top of the mountain with the higher prices, the reduced traffic volume. We don't need it. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prill. Excuse me, excuse me. I would ask, I would ask that we have no further demonstrations such as applauding. We're not, this, we're here to consider a serious issue and this is not a popularity contest. So I ask that you please not do that again. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding the Green Mountain Shawty Road rezoning?
Yes, my name is Teri Sims and I have, I own 13260 South Shawty, five acres. I think I'm probably the most closely affected. Is there anyone here who's representing 13240 or 13220? If not, I would like to say that the, first of all, legally, nothing can be done right now because the home directly adjoining that property is under contract to be sold in four days. And I don't think that the current owners, Dorothy and Herb Dixon, who own five acres, would appreciate it when the new owners come in and then they find out, oh, guess what? Surprise! The house that you bought is going to have a store right next door. I don't think any of us would appreciate that. I was driving by there today by this beautiful, beautiful, beautiful five-acre tract and there's some gorgeous trees. And that's the thing that's so beautiful this time of year, the sky is so blue. The trees are so vivid, vivid and green and it just melts your heart how beautiful it is. And the thing that disturbs me about development is a lot of times, well, I know there are a lot of good developers that leave the trees, but a lot of them just come in and they basically take out everything that's spent 50 years to grow. So we can't, you all can't really legally do anything. And I know some of you are still making up your minds, but the house is under contract and it's my understanding it's going to be closed in about four days. So both of those parties need notification. That's all I have to say and thank you. And I appreciate what you all have done so far to make Green Mountain such a lovely, lovely place. And I understand nature trails number three in attractions for Huntsville City. The Botanical Garden and the Space and Rock Center. Number three is the beautiful nature trails. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I think it might answer her question to remind that each resident that was sent a notice, so that would have gone to the homeowner that has the home on the market as well.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Laura Person. I live at 2685 Arlen Owens, two streets down from where this is proposed. And I'm definitely opposed to this project, period. I can tell you, I have three children, all high school, middle school, and elementary. No one will bring my child to my house. I need you all to understand that no one that lives in the valley wants to drive up there but us. So a storefront up there will fail. It's guaranteed. All of us are angry about this. We're certainly not going to shop there. So whatever he builds will fail because no one wants to drive up there. I just can't tell you how many times someone's told me, oh, no, I'll meet you down at Camelot Pool, but I can't drive up there. Now, number two is the traffic. It's already getting worse and worse and worse with these giant trucks going up and down the mountain since Mr. Friday has been building Inspiration Point. It's destructive to the roads. It's a serious hazard. There's been a lot of near misses as far as what I've seen, just personally driving up and down. This is going to make even more traffic going up and down the mountain. But, which, if you look at the roads there, there's just nowhere to go with it. You can't expand anything. So I just want you all to understand that whatever goes up there isn't going to be successful, so what's the point of it? And also, I would just like it all rezoned back to residential. That's just my personal opinion. Just zone it all back. We don't need commercial up there, period.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Can I speak?
Oh, excuse me. Yes.
Okay. I think I've been on this committee 26 years. I'm not exactly sure. But I've heard this so many times that when a development is started, nobody's going to shop there. Jones Valley, nobody was going to go to Target, Providence, nobody. And look at it now. I mean, everybody goes there. And you know, to me, this sounds like an opportunity to have some stores up there. Oh, why?
Excuse me, please, 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 excuse me. Unless you, unless I've called on you and given you the floor, please do not speak out.
Well, I guess I just see it different. If I lived up there, and I've been up there a lot of times because I do have friends that live there, it would be wonderful to me if there was a beauty shop and all the things that women like. I mean, what is so funny? I mean, to me, that's what you need in a neighborhood.
You know, I really don't want to have a disorderly room. And you know, you are all good people and so is everyone on this committee. And we're all here as volunteers to do a job and to, we work doing this for the city because we love our city, every part of it. And I would ask you not to respond that way when one of our members is talking. And I will ask you to leave the room if I know who's laughing when one of our members is talking. Don't call out the old-school marm in me. I'm not, I've never talked, but I got a lot of it in me. So please, please be a little more orderly. Ms. Richard.
But I just think if you would think about it, I think when a group gets together and they decide they're opposed to something, they're not willing to listen. And I think we need to hear the developer, the builder, or whoever, present what he's going to do up there. Do you even know what he's going to do? You do know?
Thank you, Peggy. Let's see, I believe you were next. And I would ask that you not repeat what someone else has said. We've heard that already, so tell us something new.
All right, my name is Melissa Friday. My address is 120 Gables Brook, Huntsville, 35806.
Thank you.
I'm co-owner of Woodland Homes and host of Dream Home Cooking. My husband and I will be breaking ground on our new home at Inspiration on Green Mountain in just a few short months, and we are both very much looking forward to becoming full-time residents on Green Mountain. I would like to ask the planning commission to vote in favor of our keeping this small commercial tract of land. It has been a longtime goal of mine to open a small, quaint, and quiet lunch restaurant in Huntsville. I would be thrilled to have the opportunity to do so with this tract of land. I envision my restaurant to be a very peaceful place for residents to stop in and enjoy a delicious lunch, a gourmet coffee, or perhaps to stop in and pick up a ready-made picnic lunch to take along on a hike of the nature trail. Mike and I have no intentions of ever creating a commercial-type environment that would be loud and disruptive to the already peaceful and tranquil atmosphere on Green Mountain. What we both envision is something very quaint and appropriate for Green Mountain, a boutique-type center that is aesthetically pleasing to the eye with appropriate architectural style, a place where we can all ride a bike or walk to if we just don't feel like getting in the car. Perhaps a small dry cleaners, a place for children to get ice cream. We want to create an environment for residents, our children and grandchildren to go to, that gives us all a sense of old-time living. I think you can take a look at what Mike Friday has created on Green Mountain thus far and see that he does have the appropriate vision and would only choose what's right and good for the residents of Green Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Cory Paul and I'm going to be a future resident of Green Mountain. I'm currently building in the Inspiration Community. And one of the things that we were attracted to in coming to Green Mountain was the beautiful nature area. But in learning about the commercial rezoning, I'm actually in favor for it because coming from where I did, which was Northern Virginia, and I'm very familiar with very large commercial properties, but one thing that's nice to have in a neighborhood is somewhere for your children to go on their bikes and to walk. And the thought of my children driving up and down on their bikes on Green Mountain does not really sit well with me. And I would love the idea of having some sort of an area where they could go and get ice cream or to, you know, go grab something on the way to or from the nature trail, which we've also enjoyed several times. So I would just like to say on the record that I am in favor of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hello again. Ken Arrington, 2018, Shadowwood Drive. And I'm also closing on a house in Inspiration on the 22nd of September. I come from West Virginia. I was in the military for a long time and I love the mountains. I've lived in the mountains all my life. And the reason I'm selling the house on the little mountain that I'm on right now on Shadowwood and moving up to the big mountain is because I love the mountains, love nature. Hiker, I do all that stuff. But you know what? On a Saturday morning, when I forgot to get the bacon and the biscuits, I don't really want to have to drive down the mountain to get it to make my wife biscuits and gravy. Biscuits and gravy fan. Alabama fan, too. But anyway, the way I'm looking at this is that there is one of two options. Number one is keep the zoning the way it is. Number two is to reduce the commercial footprint. At least that's the way I'm looking at it. There is not an option on the table to eliminate the commercial zoning up there. So I'm not sure what the real argument is at this point in my mind. Do I want to, do I want a gas station up there with an aluminum building and aluminum? And, no, I don't. A little boutique shop, that would be cool. Starbucks would be really nice. I like Starbucks. But any kind of nice coffee or something like that on the way to work and I don't have to fight the traffic down on the bottom of the hill to try to get into Dunkin' Donuts or into a Starbucks. I picked up my coffee right there on the mountain where admittedly, there's not going to be a lot of traffic, but at the same time, someone was saying, well, there'd be so much more traffic coming up the mountain. Well, that's a circular argument. You can't say that it's going to fail because nobody would come to it, but there's going to be so much more traffic coming up the mountain to go to it. So it's a circular argument. So which one's which? And how do we really judge if something's going to fail? You can't judge it if, so I'm, I'll go to it. If it's nice and it's good prices, decent prices, most people that live on the mountain, I think, can afford a, you know, a $2 cup of coffee, I'm going to go there. It's convenient. The other part of it is where my house is going to be sitting. It's almost done. It's looking pretty. My wife goes in and cries every day at it and then comes home and fusses at me to make sure something's fixed that's not quite right the way she wants it. She is really excited about it, but we butt straight up against, directly against some of this zoning that either, that is not going to be changed if you vote no. It's going to stay multifamily. What do I have against multifamily units? Nothing. People who buy them are perfectly decent people. Multifamily units tend to do what? Turn into rental communities because they're usually cheaper. They're usually less expensive, right? So they turn into rentals. Military, 21 years, I lived in rental communities because that's what we had to do. I don't like rental communities. I'm leaving a place right now that the guy right beside me has weeds that are 10 feet tall because there's no zoning, there's no restrictions in our neighborhood right now. 10 feet tall. I've had arguments with the man about cut your weeds. You're in a community, for crying out loud. You're ruining our property values and all this kind of stuff. Came to the point, we had to, had to move and found this opportunity. What's on the table right now, and this is, correct me if I'm wrong, is leave the zoning the way it is or rezone it with a smaller commercial and get rid of that multifamily so I don't have to live behind renters in my backyard that don't take care of their property, let the weeds grow, and their houses start falling apart because sometimes renters just don't care. It's not their piece of property. I'm not rich. I don't have a ton of money. I've been saving a whole, long, long, long time and I don't want to make enemies of any of my neighbors up here that I'm coming up to be neighbors with. But the amount of money I'm putting into my house right now is significant to me and rezoning it just for the fact of getting rid of the multifamily right in my backyard is extremely important to me. So I- So I, I, I don't know which way you can go. If you say no, it's going to stay the same, and there's going to be a massive commercial property up there. And if I was a businessman, I'd sell that to a big commercial company, and we don't know what's getting up there. I own a small business, too, a small video production company, and you're in business to make money. And if I had that, and they said, "No, we're not rezoning," and I had that big piece of property I can't do anything with, I'm going to sell it. I'm not going to settle on it. And nobody in their right mind would, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying anyone in here is not in their right mind. I'm just saying, think of it as a businessman yourself. If you're sitting on this big chunk of property, and you can't get it rezoned to what you're trying to get it rezoned to, you're going to sell it. Now it's going to be even bigger, and we'll be back in this fight in here again, trying to get it done. At least, from what I can tell what Mr. Friday's saying, it would be a very unique boutique kind of commercial thing. It's, it's not big commercial, still ugly buildings that, you know, you don't want to even drive past it, uh, you know, in the morning to go to work or to go home. It'll, it'll look nice, and it'll actually, I, I don't know, I don't know if I'll walk down there. I'll probably still drive there, but, you know, it'd be nice to go down and get some biscuits and gravy in the morning, so my wife doesn't fuss at me in the morning because I forgot the day before.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. I, I think you've, you've given us a lot of, uh, food for thought here. No biscuits and gravy, but food for thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Karen Schuster. I currently live at 196 Jeff Road in Huntsville. Um, I'm new to the area. I moved here, um, in early June, and I'm two months into having a home built on the mountain in the Inspiration neighborhood at 42 Bluffview Drive. Um, while I'm really, really excited to get to live on the mountain and what it has to offer in terms of its beauty and tranquility and community, I'm also really excited about Mr. Friday's vision of having some small specialized retail on the mountain. For me, this is going to be my first time in fifteen years of living outside of an urban environment. I lived in the city in Denver, and then also in Alexandria, Virginia, where, um, the whole time we had, uh, small retail, um, establishments, um, happily coexisting peacefully within our neighborhoods, and that can be a beautiful thing. While I'm also appreciating the attributes of my new environment, I'm thrilled about Mr. Friday's forward-thinking with regards to the benefits of having neighborhood businesses on the mountain. It's going to be great to have, to be able to enjoy the everyday conveniences of things like a coffee shop, a specialty grocery store, ice cream store, flower shop, salon, other establishments that are going to be assets to our community, and also provide some community gathering spots that can pull all of the neighborhoods together in one place and allow us to become friends rather than sitting here in a, in a, uh, city council chambers arguing over something. We'll have a place to go in the evenings, or on a Saturday morning, have some brunch, maybe enjoy some live music. Um, I think it's going to provide a unique opportunity for those who live on the mountain, and to be able to do that without having to drive off the mountain. So I would just like to say that the proposed rezoning provides us the option for us to have these benefits. It has really zero risk from the current zoning, and therefore, I'm in favor of, of the, of the proposal for the rezoning.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Shirley Madaloff. I live at 4 Spring Haven Circle in the Preserve at Clayton Pond. Um, one of the questions I really have for the council, and I actually have spoken to Shevsky, I don't know if you remember, I actually called one time, uh, concerned about whether or not, when Inspiration Point, when the density was as large as it was, whether any consideration was given to Green Mountain Road. It's a two-lane, one lane up, one lane down, double-lined, blind curves all the way up. Um, it's a steep grade, and whether any consideration was given to that, that with the number of increased traffic, how, if necessary, would that road ever be able to be expanded? He checked for me, and surprisingly, the answer was no. So, I'm concerned with, I mean, because right now, we're faced, and I granted, some of that traffic will be alleviated once construction is done, but we've had several instances where trucks have broken down coming up that road, and you have to sit behind it and then floor your car to go around and hope like heck there's nobody coming the other way. There are no shoulders to that road, and it would be very expensive to do any kind of work to it. So I'm just curious as to whether the city takes that into consideration when you approve commercial up at the top of the mountain? And what would you do to, you know, to have the road accommodate what's going to be up there?
Um, you know, that, that issue is not before this committee now. Uh, we, we do not take those, those issues into consideration. The plans always go before the, uh, Traffic Engineering Department, and, um, and of course, budget matters to build new roads come out of the city at large, but we, we do not make budget recommendations or recommendations for new roads.
So before, but I guess my question is, before you would make that decision, would you then talk to the Traffic Engineering to, to ensure that the infrastructure can handle it?
Every plaque, every plaque goes through Traffic Engineering. Uh, but I, I think that, and, and someone could correct me if, if necessary, um, uh...
Just to be clear, it's already zoned commercial, so we're not adding...
Forty years ago, though.
Right, but we're not adding any, any commercial development. We're not adding any commercial zoning districts. So, the road's there, the commercial's already there.
But forty years ago, there was not the volume of traffic that's going up there today. So to say that you might have looked at it forty years ago would be out, somewhat outdated.
Well, it, I, I might add that, that it was also zoned, um, R2A forty years ago, and, and that's, that would add quite a bit of, uh, traffic to the mountain if that were to develop into multifamily. So, you know, as you're looking at those issues, you might balance that out. You're not going to have those, those cars from potential, uh, multifamily dwellers. So, I, I'm, I'm not sure that the traffic, as, as it's finished, is an issue that, that we're looking at today. Do you have anything else?
No.
Yes, sir?
Hey, I'm Ryan Tedini from 120705 Oak South again. This isn't my neighborhood. I live in southeast Huntsville, so I don't have, um, an opinion on the matter as far as whether I support or don't support it. But as a resident of Huntsville for the past over twenty-five years, I've been on the mountain only a few times. Just like the gentleman who preceded me, uh, was talking about going down the mountain to get ham and cheese omelets or whatever for his wife, I wouldn't go up the mountain to get ham and cheese omelets. I'd just go to somewhere near, closer to my house. So, unless the commercial development is extremely specialized, and you can find something that you can't find anywhere else, I wouldn't go up there. So I don't really see, uh, a large increase in traffic. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Doug Smith. I live at 38 Bluffview Drive in Inspiration. And I'll try not to be redundant, but, you know, I just want to make sure everybody here, especially from the Green Mountain League, I appreciate them, and I'm honored to live on Green Mountain. I'm excited about it. It's why I moved here. I know a lot of us that are on, in Inspiration came from somewhere else. I came from Montgomery, and I've lived here since 1991. So, uh, I've seen some of these developments where, if it's done properly, it can enhance property values and the experience. I'm, I'm not friends with the Fridays. I hope someday to be their neighbor and their friends, but they're my customer. I'm their customer. So, you know, I, I just believe this is, has the potential to improve our lifestyle on Green Mountain. So that's why I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to add one more thing, um, because this all sounds dandy, like it's Providence or something, but I want y'all to understand, maybe many of you don't come up to Green Mountain much, we don't have sidewalks. None, on the whole mountain. You can't just walk on down and stroll unless you want to take your life in your hands on South Shawnee, because cars go extremely fast. So our kids aren't biking down South Shawnee to get ice cream unless they want to die. So, uh, my kids don't do that. Um, so there, there's no sidewalks. There's no nothing for us to be doing this community gathering with. So, I, I'm not quite sure, I mean, it sounds nice, I guess, but, um, it, but functionally, it's just going to be a store. That's it.
Thank you.
Ma- Madam Chair, before she speaks, uh, Jim or Mike, what, what's the speed limit on Shawnee? Because it appears that a good majority of you all live here, so if there's a speeding problem, then we can... Do we know what the speed limit is at...
Forty, probably.
Forty miles an hour? Thirty-five?
About thirty, thirty to thirty-five.
Thirty to thirty-five? Okay, so everybody knows what the speed limit is?
South Shawnee's speed limit is thirty-five.
Thirty-five, everybody?
Thank you, Mr. Perlm.
Yeah. I have a slide. I can talk to the speeds.
That's, that's, that's okay. We, we...
All right.
Yeah, but I appreciate your information.
We have had a Traffic Engineering study done because the eighty-fifth percentile speeds were well above fifty-five miles an hour, and a couple stretches along that same intersection that we're talking about. We have been talking with the South Huntsville Precinct Captain about patrols up there because of the road warriors that come up and down and run up that ridge back and forth. Excessive speeds is a regular and recurring problem for which we're trying to address.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, my name is Lorraine Noland. I live at 10 Autumn Glory Lane at the Preserve Clayton Pond. And, uh, I guess my major concern is the increase of the commercial property that could possibly butt up to, uh, our prop, our, um, community. And if we're talking about live music, commercial, trucks, and things like that coming in, we specifically bought in that property for the peacefulness and the quietness, and would not like to see that disruptive. Um, so we'd like that to be taken into consideration. As far as the quality of the, the structures or the look of it, um, is there a guideline that it has to meet a certain look for the mountain, or that sort of thing, when you build a commercial property? Or you're just allowed to build whatever? Um, so as far as it being done in that mode, or in that presentation to fit in with Green Mountain, what assurance would we have as homeowners up there that that would happen? And that would be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask, uh, Mr. McGuffey to address the music issue, uh, in that zoning.
In this zoning district, uh, live entertainment is not, not allowed to be audible outside, cannot go on after eleven, and they have to go before the Board of Adjustment, uh, to even receive a license for live music. For the style of the building, the building cannot be clad in metal on the exterior at all. So there are design criteria for structures in this zoning, commercial zoning district.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Tracy Aelworth. I live at 20 Veridian Way, um, on Inspiration on Green Mountain. And we are new to the community, just moved there a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm in, we're in favor of the development mainly because as it, as people have been talking about the commercial aspect of it all, it's already zoned for commercial. Um, it could be commercial and multifamily. It's proposed that it be smaller commercial and, uh, single-family. And I feel like you're better with the devil that you know than the devil that you don't know. So, um, I have faith in Mike Friday based on my community, that he would do a good job in developing it. I would have less faith if he sold it and someone else came in and developed it. So I would prefer that he be allowed to develop it, um, and get the approval of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, I'm, I'm going to ask, we're, we're approaching 6:30, and I'm going to ask you to keep your comments concise. How many more people wish to speak? Would you just raise your hands if you're planning to speak? I see, one, two, three, four. Okay, we'll take four more speakers. Yes, sir?
Jim Bostick, 5015 Riverview Drive. Couple things. We talk about the R2 and the C1, you know, uh, Mr. Friday has lumped them together. They can be mutually exclusive. You know, he can come back here and have the R2 moved to R1 next meeting. So, that he's packaged it, makes it look sweet, but it's not necessarily connected together. The two parcels are smaller and separated. We would like to keep them that way, that at least minimizes what there can be developed there. You know, putting the, put them together, you may get a smaller total package, but I think with offsets right-of-way, he probably has more buildable space. So I would suggest that we leave it in two smaller tracts. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Frank Zimmerman. I'm 600 South Green Mountain Road. I don't live on top of the mountain, but I do have a unique perspective in that I, I do run on top of the mountain. And for the last fourteen years, I've been running on top of the mountain, four miles every few days. The traffic up there has increased enormously. Nobody in their right mind would let their children on South Shawnee at any time of the day or night. I can personally tell you that. That is a dangerous road. There are no sidewalks. There are ditches in some places. Uh, some places, I just have to jump a ditch to get off the road when cars are coming. Secondly, the only thing that I would see with what I'm hearing here, uh, I'm, I'm hearing how this is going to be little petite shops, but I haven't heard anything that says, "This here in the law says that's what it's going to be." It strikes me, it could be anything. And that, I think, is what's bothering people.
Actually, it could not be anything. There's a specific, uh, specific uses that are described in the zoning ordinances that control the, uh, businesses that can go in into a C1A district, or into any other district, but, but...
Aren't those the same as what went in a Target shopping center?
I, I would have to, yes. I don't, I don't think it's big enough for a Target.
Uh, yeah, Jones Valley or Five Points are both zoned the same.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it was what?
Jones Valley and Five Points are the same zoning district, are proposed to C1.
Okay, so you could put anything that's in Target up there. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
So, if I, if you could get the developer to come along and put something, I don't know if you can do that even, in the zoning that says, "It can only have these kinds of shops, they can only be this size, they can only look like this," I think you'd get a lot less opposition.
But, but, may I ask in regard to that, what can go into the C, uh, the C1 zoning that it, it is currently zoned, that can't go into the C1A?
C1 and C1A are very similar in uses. Um, it's more, it's more just density overall. And, uh, also Ashley can get, has the list. She can give you a, a list of changes between C1A and C1.
Ashley, could you, could you clarify that, to tell us what could go in, listen very carefully now, what can go into C1A first, and then compare that to what can go in the current zoning, which is C1?
There are, um, similar uses that are avail, that, uh, are permitted within C1 that are permitted within C1A. Um, but there are some that are excluded, such as your antique stores, your art galleries, um, any type of car wash facility.
Those are excluded from C1A?
Those are excluded from C1A, but they are permitted within C1. Also, um, there's a difference in the setbacks. In C1A, the, uh, front yard setback is a minimum 100 from the street, whereas in the C1 district, there's a minimum of 30. So there are some significant differences between the uses permitted, as well as setbacks that differ between the two.
Okay. Okay, now just to clarify that, on a C1A, the front setback is, is 100 feet?
Yes.
Before he could build a building?
Yes, and that's from all, from all streets.
And that's on the proposed zoning. On the current zoning, he can be 30 feet from the...
Minimum 30, um, from any street that's not a major arterial. If it's a major arterial, it's a minimum of 50 feet.
And, and one more clarification, uh, in C1A, there's certain landscaping required. Uh, am I correct about that?
Yeah, both of them are going to have landscape buffer requirements when they abut residential zoning districts. There's going to be buffer and berm, plant material requirements.
Okay, okay, so there will be, will be typical, uh, plantings? And I think I had someone, um, I, I, thank you, Ashley.
Is there a rear setback as well?
Like say, on setback, are there also on the rear setback?
Yes, ma'am, there is a rear setback. In C-one, if the property abuts residential, there's a minimum twenty-foot setback. In C-one-A, there's a minimum twenty-five from our rear lot lines. Also, in C-one, there are requirements as far as the height is concerned, where C-one-A does not address those.
Mr. Zimmerman? I can't hear, you'll have to go to the microphone, so what you say will be on the record.
I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I, I think I heard you say that he's asking to go to C-one-A?
Yes.
I read that he's asking to go to C-one. Would you check that please?
The C-one, okay. The C-one.
Could we have the developer, I believe he's here, tell us what he's going to do, so we will know.
Yes, yes, and I think, I, I know Mr. Friday was one of the, the speakers that I recognized. Four people had raised their hand, and this lady was one of them. And if she wants to speak, then we'll have Mr. Friday.
I don't know if this has been-
Your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sue Zupko, fifty-four Bluffview Drive. We just moved in. This is my second Mike Friday home. He does a good product, and we lived out in the, out in the county before and had this beautiful backyard, beautiful nature, it was quiet and serene. I am four-choice C, which is all residential, skip this commercial stuff. I moved up on the mountain I would not have built had I known that there was even commercial there, because I don't want any commercial up there. I want it to be serene. I almost had a coronary when I found out how many, how much property he had bought to build houses. I'm like, what? But we had already committed and were building when I found this out. And Green Mountain has been part of our family life, going up to the nature trail. And I agree with the gentleman, there's no way that I would let a child of any age, there's one man that goes up and down the mountain, running every day, I think he's nuts. Because, I mean, and he, and he gets upset when people are going up and down the mountain. It's like, well, how can you be upset? Because this road is so narrow, and it's the same way up on top of the mountain. And I was very upset when I heard that we were going to do this. That said, if Mike were to develop it, if Mike were to develop it and not sell it for somebody else, I think it would be more tasteful. But I don't know if we can say, well, you have to build because you can't. So I say, make it all residential.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else before I recognize Mr. Friday? Yes, sir, this will be the last speaker, and then Mr. Friday, and then we're going to proceed to voting.
Yeah, my name is Ken Nolan, I'm at ten Autumn Glory Lane in the Preserve at Clayton Pond. The one issue that I haven't heard anybody talking about yet, to bring something new to the table, is the parking associated with a commercial area. I, I would be really concerned that we're not going to be in a situation where, as you've heard, the pathways up and down the mountain are pretty constrained as it is. And if we start looking at some additional parking issues, if there is, if, if the commercial property becomes a huge success, and everybody from the south end comes up Green Mountain to go get a hamburger or ice cream, we got to be careful of the parking issues, again, to be more constrictive to the traffic, and again, creating additional safety hazards along that road. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Friday?
One sec, can we get an answer on, on that, on parking?
Yep. Uses regulate the amount of parking places required on site. So a barber shop has a different reg on parking than an office or retail center. So it depends on the square footage of the use of the building as to how many parking places you need for such use.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, sir, Mr. Friday, would you give your name and address?
My name is Mike Friday. My address is one-twenty Gables Brook Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-zero-six. Ashley, would you pull up Google Maps again, please? I know that most of the time when developers come before the Planning Commission, they're asking for more. And I know it's kind of strange for me to stand up here as a developer and request a rezoning that will eliminate eleven, eleven acres of multifamily property and reduce it to single family. It sounds crazy, but that is what I'm asking for. Also, in my proposal of the rezoning, I am asking for the commercial to be reduced. I have met with the Green Mountain Civic League several times, and they're a great group of people. But, you know, it is, I, they keep on asking me to make concessions, and I feel like by reducing the property and eliminating all the multifamily is a huge concession from a developer's standpoint. And also eliminating one additional acre of commercial is a huge concession. So what is the plan? What is the vision? Madam, if I may approach the main speaker? Okay, so, so here is Inspiration on Green Mountain right here. We are, right here is Phase One, we've developed Phase Two, and we are now in the process of developing Phase Three. A separate, a separate tract of land was developed, it was a hundred and seventy acres, and it will proceed from the, from the entrance all the way down to the next neighbor down South Shaw D, which will be approximately three-quarters of a mile. I feel like that we have a unique opportunity, when I purchased this property, that it did include some multifamily and also single family. And when, before I even bought any of these properties, I did meet with the people on Green Mountain, because I understood before I even went to Green Mountain that, that it was a, a group that was very concerned about what did happen on the mountain. And so I've always taken a proactive stance. The last meeting that I had with them pertained to this track right here. I am going to be a resident up there, I'm going to be a homeowner up there, I plan on spending the rest of my life up there. And I, I do want you to know that I was approached to solve a problem. The problem that was created forty years ago. And that problem was commercial zoning. Well, forty years ago, the, the city planning department at that time had a vision. And, and I do believe that that vision is still vital today, more so now than it was forty years ago. And they looked to me to solve the problem, which I really didn't see it as a problem. And I gave them an opportunity. I gave them an opportunity to, to sell them the five acres at a reasonable price, and did not hear any response back to them for that. So I am working with landscape engineers and landscape architects and currently. And anything that I do with any of the developments that I do, to me, it's a track record, it's my reputation, and it's something that I take very, very seriously. So when I'm looking at the opportunity up on Green Mountain, I'm really looking at a, an opportunity to do something really special, really unique, up on top of the mountain, that I think that would benefit not only the city of Huntsville, but also the residents and all the residents up on top of Green Mountain. So as I stated, from this entrance, there is three-quarters of a mile all the way down. So currently, we're in planning and engineering of this whole area here. And so all I have right now is basically concepts of what my vision is, and I'm working with my landscape architects and engineers in order to be able to put that and reduce it on paper. The residents up there have complained repeatedly tonight about traffic and about speed. And I do have a solution that I think that will fix that, and that is that right here at this intersection, we are planning on putting the, a main boulevard entrance into Phase Four of Inspiration. I look at this as an opportunity to take this whole corner right here and really do something special, so that when somebody approaches this intersection, they feel like that they're somewhere special. And, and, and that's, that's what I envision. I have twenty-foot access all the way down, three-quarters of a mile on the east side of the road. There will be a five-foot sidewalk all the way down. Part of this twenty feet, I don't think it's enough. I'm going to create another twenty-foot common area all the way down, that, that will be adjacent to the right-ofway, so that we will have forty feet all the way down, three-quarters of the mile, to where I would like to take my five-foot sidewalk and just kind of meander it in and out all the way down, every fifty to a hundred feet, creating stacked stone columns with very low-lit light posts, so that as residents throughout the community can walk down this road at, in this sidewalk at nighttime. These sidewalks will interconnect with a Phase Four sidewalk, and everything will interconnect throughout the community. This entrance here, I will be doing a double boulevard entrance here with a medium down the middle. If y'all are familiar with Bishop Farms off of Old Monrovia Road, it is a absolutely gorgeous entrance. It is now ten years old, it has matured with the landscaping very, very nicely. And my vision is to create the same type entrance, and this being the primary entrance into the community. We have an opportunity to be able to take this whole area here and complement it with tree planting, sidewalks on both sides of the road. And one of the things that, you know, that, that, you know, that, that I would see up here on top of the mountain is what's already been suggested, but also a nice boutique grocery store. You know, in Europe, they say that the Europeans take a shower once a week, but they go to the grocery store once a day. And that's for they, for them to go and be able to get fresh produce, fresh food, fresh meats and fishes and, and, and bread. Those are the types of boutique stores that I, that I see here. I see it low-density, I see it very, very quaint, I see open green space with very, very soft lit, a lot of landscaping and a lot of trees, to create a unique village center and to create a very, very well landscaped property. I'm excited about this opportunity. It's the first opportunity that I've really had an opportunity to really make an impact on a, on an intersection right here. And I see this as an opportunity to put a four-way stop sign in, when we put this next phase in. And as a result of that, it will slow the traffic down on South Shaw D. And that is a major concern for a lot of residents up there. So that is my vision, that is my plan.
One question regarding that, have you, have you discussed a four-way stop sign with traffic engineering?
I have not.
Do you have any idea whether that would?
They would need to speak to traffic engineering to determine if they wanted a traffic stop or signal at that location.
What about a, what about a roundabout?
We did, my engineer with Foresight did recommend a roundabout. I love roundabouts. My issue that I looked at, due to the amount of growth that's going to happen in, on the south part of Inspiration, is, you know, getting the, the trucks and the eighteen-wheelers to maneuver around that roundabout. And I felt like that that may be a little bit more challenging in a residential area. But a roundabout would certainly not be out of the question for me at this point.
None of those, those plant, nothing has gone before the, you don't have any concrete designs on, on that at this time, because we're just now seeking rezoning on that. So that's, that's for the future.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't look at that tonight until we know what the zoning's going to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I asked the Commission for their support in my rezoning request. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friday. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, yes, John.
I just want to make it clear that, Mark, you're going to have to help me with the gentleman's name, John, he's up in Idaho right now.
The gentleman?
Yes, he called me today, and obviously, he's sided with, with you folks. But I also have gotten an email from my ALS brother, I'm having-
Stuart.
Stuart Oberman, and he was, you know, those two guys are very similar in real estate, commercial, all the above. And he was, I'm just sharing it because I'm not sure everybody knew that, he, he had sent similar email and was for it. So I just, I, I wanted you guys to know that John called me, and I got a good thirty minutes of John, and it was, it was fine. But I mean, he, he gave me that. I'm not really asking questions, are we going to talk, have comment to make?
Yes, yes, we, we will.
Do that at the last thing? Because I, I, I have to make a few comments, I just-
You, well, I-
Then it's fine, I can wait.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, we're-
I don't, I don't know how many of the great Americans who live up on Green Mountain know how involved I have been in this for the last two months. But I have spoken with Mark in great detail, I have spoken with Bev into a certain amount of detail. I have today spent quite a bit of time with a couple gentlemen, and I've spent time with Mike Friday, and I've been up there to visit it three times. And I, all this information today, I've heard it all. So I'm sharing with you, the fight has been there the whole time, it's not like it's new news to me. So I just want to share with you, it's not, I'm not sitting here tonight as your councilman and as a planning concern, Planning Commission representative that I volunteered to be on, because I used to get sick of sitting at city council, and they'd bring stuff to me, and I didn't know anything about it. So I'm sharing with you that I have listened to, I have heard all of it, and, and I'm very comfortable that there's two good arguments, and I'll leave it at that, because I just, sorry for this, but I got an email the other day, I'm two and a half months left in my time here, and some comments were made that I don't say anything at city council, that I don't get up here and tirade about what's not happening in South Huntsville and why, you know, I don't do that. I do all that behind the scenes. And I haven't won a lot, just for what it's worth, in, in South Huntsville in economic development. But I'm sharing with you that I haven't been one of those to get up there and pontificate and make my, you know, make a grandstand, because I hate to tell you all, nothing happened in North Huntsville either. It's been pretty much downtown. So I share with you that I have been very involved with this for the last two months, and I don't want any of you all thinking that I just spent up here asleep. I've listened to it all, I appreciate you all being here tonight.
Thank you very much, Council. Mr. Friday, if you're done, then we will proceed with the meeting, and our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, non-conforming lots of record. Lisa?
Yes, this was, this was last seen by the Planning Commission at the April twenty-second public hearing. And at that time, we presented the changes to Article seventy-four.
No, I didn't. Excuse me, Lisa. Vince reminded me, I did not close that public hearing.
Sorry.
There being no further comment, public hearing is closed on Shaw D rezoning. Proceed, please.
Okay. This was last seen by the Planning Commission during the April twenty-second public hearing, and Planning Commission did make a recommendation to the city council for approval of the ordinance amendment changes. Before it got to the city council public hearing, there was some concerns that the two paragraphs you see here, paragraphs one and two, were a little confusing, and if they're hard to understand, they're going to be hard to enforce. And so we requested, the planning staff requested during the city council meeting, that it be returned to zoning committee. It was introduced at zoning committee this month, and I'd like to show you the new version, which the members of the zoning committee saw, which simplifies the language and would therefore make it easier to understand and easier to enforce. And so what we've done is put everything that we wanted into this one paragraph much simpler and easier to read.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. This is the time for a public hearing on that, are there any comments regarding the zoning ordinance amendment for non-conforming lots of record? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Gary Kimberly is not here tonight, and I would ask if you would give us the subdivision committee report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. The subdivision committee met on August twentieth, twenty-fourteen, and these are the following recommendations. Item number one, Arbers at River Landing Apartments, the committee recommends re-layout and pre-p preliminary layout approval on three hundred and forty-eight units.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Item number two is Claude's Corner, presented for final approval on four lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order for final.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Item number three is the Mark C. Smith Drive subdivision, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of lots one and two of Mark C. Smith Drive subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the- The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots one and two and the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two, also presented for final approval on two lots.
Okay, let's, let's take the first part of that. Okay.
Second.
It's in order. It is in order, yes.
Okay. Can we do that in separate, separate motions? Okay. On the first motion to approve layout, to, for layout approval on the two lots on Mark Smith, Mark C. Smith Drive, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, can I have a motion for the, it is in order for final approval?
Yes, ma'am, someone.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, McMullen Cove, Braywick, Phase Three, and Sanders Hill at McMullen Cove. The committee recommends re-layout approval on 108 lots and preliminary approval on 22 lots with the following modification. Cul-de-sac length along Legacy Oaks Place to 1,140 feet, right-of-way to 40 feet, and pavement to 22 feet along Legacy Oaks Place and with the following waiver. Braywick, Phase Three, non-radio lot line between lots eight, nine, nine and 10, 10 and 11, 14, 15, 21 and 22, 24 and 25. Sanders Hill, non-radio lot line between lots eight and nine, 12 and 13, 49 and 50, 54 and 55, 56 and 57, 71 and 72, 75 and 76, and double-fronted lots between lots 28 through 31, lots 55 and 56.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is item five, McMullen Cove, Silo Hill, Phase One. The committee recommends re-preliminary layout approval on 22 lots.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Midtown on the Park, Phase Three, a re-subdivision of tract B. Midtown on the Park, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of tract B. Midtown on the Park, Phase One A, presented for final approval on 34 lots.
Is this in order for final approval?
It's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by August 19, 2015.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, item seven, Montesano Court, Phase Two, re-subdivision of lot nine and 10, and a part of Laura's View, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots nine and 10.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Montesano Court, Phase Two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is Nature's Trail, Phase Two. The committee recommends re-layout and preliminary approval on 28 lots.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Nature's Trail, Phase Two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Four, re-subdivision of lot one of Farley Farm. The committee recommends re-layout approval on 40 lots and preliminary layout approval on 12 lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot lines between lots four and five, seven and eight, 24 and 25, and 25 and 26.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Oak Grove at Farley Farm? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, Old Cove, Phase Three, at McMullen Cove, presented for final approval on seven lots.
Is this in order for final?
It's in order with improvements to be installed by 8/18/2015 and sidewalks to be installed by 8/18/2016.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, Overland Cove, Phase Two, re-subdivision of tract of Overland Cove, presented for final approval on 71 lots.
Is that in order for final, Jim?
It's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by 8/26/2015.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, Parkside Town Centra. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on eight lots with the following modification. Standard cul-de-sac to T-type turn around and a waiver on the double-fronted lots one, two, and five. Non-radio lot line between lots one and two, two and five, three and four, seven and eight, and the angle of the side lot line between lots seven and eight.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, this is also presented for final approval on eight lots.
And is that in order?
It is, yes, it is.
Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, Pebble Creek, Phase Three, at River Landing. The committee recommends preliminary layout approval on 31 lots.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Location character and extent. Item number one, Maynard Cooper Pedestrian Bridge. Public hearing was held today.
The floor is open for discussion on this. I will open up on discussion. I have, I have a concern about, as far as I know, we haven't passed any pedestrian bridges on location character and extent anywhere except in the public areas and one small bridge connecting a parking lot to an apartment complex that only went over an alley. And I'm concerned that this might set a precedent that we will have to continue to follow.
We have, we have approved in the past the crossing of a street at the Twickenham Development down here from the Huntsville Hospital parking garage to the Triad Building, the six-story building at Twickenham Development. So that was a public-to-private approval that we did.
Okay, now, that one was from, is that the one that crosses an alleyway?
This crosses the intersection of Gallatin and St. Clair.
And it goes from?
Huntsville Hospital parking deck to the new Triad Properties building. I think, I believe it's a six-story building.
So, and it was public-private?
It's public-private.
It serves the parking for that, provides parking for that apartment complex? Okay. Any, any other discussion? Okay.
Can we see, I'm sorry, can we see a visual of the bridge design? Do we have that?
Just the way you all, we're basically right up here. This is Williams. You're to continue on Fountain Road, or Fountain Circle, it becomes Fountain Road. It's existing progress building is here. The existing Maynard Cooper building is here. The new building is here, and it's this orange kind of angled piece that is the pedestrian walkway across Fountain Road. And then here is just some rendering of what it will look like. The character will match the existing Maynard Cooper building, so they have a split face block, fish to match. So it would be kind of seamless across the street. Even the new building is going to match the existing building. And I'm Daniel Wilson, I'm the managing general of the Maynard Cooper deal. And the background on this is, we have been in this building, we've actually expanded this building. We've been here since 94 and expanded it as much as we can on this lot. Our law firm is growing very rapidly. We had to open a research park office and we've expanded and moved part of our orders out there because we have the space. We've looked downtown at a number of different options to accommodate not only our current need, which is for the additional 8,000 square feet. This building is 7,450. This building is 16,000 square feet. Our plan is to lease, we're going to lease with the Jones family, who own both buildings, to lease the entire top floor. But the limit we had was finding a place for 4,500 square feet. Now, I also have room to grow. So the practical reality is, there were no options for us downtown. Looking at the building, looking at the place, we're looking at every building downtown. And for us to stay downtown, this was really the only viable option. And I know this commission is rightfully concerned about creating a precedent that could not be pleasant. I'd like to point out that when we presented this in the board of zoning adjustments to get the building oriented this way, we, everybody recognized that this building is in a very unique historic buffer zone B, I think is what it's called. And this is the only neighborhood street that exists inside that very unique zoning classification. So for this group as a presidential standpoint, this should not create, because this project is so unique and anybody else trying to do this is going to be similar enough where this is not going to be, create a precedent where you're going to have these things springing up all over Huntsville. I'll tell you too, that what's unique about this even more than that is the cost. This is not inexpensive to do. This is not something that if you had another option, we would have taken. The walkway itself is going to cost about $350,000. The only reason this is working for us is because we do have this building here and we're able to spread this cost, not only this building, but this building. What this will do is allow us to stay downtown, allow us to keep, keep our employees downtown and give us growth regarding how we project for the next 10 years.
Mr. Wilson, I have a question. So are you saying that you currently own this building?
We leased this building from the Jones family, and they own these two lots. This is where Sid, the tailor shop was for years, and the building has been just.
Oh, so that building, you have to build that building?
Yes, we're building this, but the plan is to build a building across the street.
And so you will lease that building as well?
Yes, we'll lease it off.
So what will happen in 20 years should you decide to move? Then who will own the bridge?
Well, the bridge is owned by, the bridge is owned by the Jones family. It's the same entity that, it's called Gallatin Partners LLC, which is our landlord here. It'll be the developer and the landlord here. It'll actually be, their group is going to be on the first floor along with Crumpleton and Associates. But the bridge is designed to be removable if at some point in time.
Removable?
If the economics of it dictate that they want to sell these buildings separately. We've just finalized the air rights lease with the city today, or substantially finalized. But one of the issues the city had was making, making sure that all of this stayed together. And we're fine with that. We're fine with having it where everything stays in as one component. So if they transfer this building and this building, all of this goes together, and we're fine with that.
You're going to be on the third, second floor. Who's going to be on the first? I didn't hear that.
The first floor of this building will be G. B. Jones Properties and then also Crumpleton and Associates. Let's say Crumpleton and his father Richard and their brokers that are property managers.
So it's a two-story building?
Yes, it is. So it's two-story to two-story. And the clearance here is 17 feet. It's a, it's a box, an airbox roughly of about 622 feet. So we tried to, we tried to design it in a way to minimize the impact. Our neighbors are fine with this. Joe and Rosemary lead it on this building next to us. They were there when the board of zoning adjustments approved it. They love the concept. They like what it's doing to the neighborhood. You know, our plan is to be long-term residents down there, and we want to be good neighbors and add to the neighborhood. As Josh has told you, this is going to, this is going to blend in aesthetically with what we're doing on both buildings. And really, what we feel like it's going to do is be a springboard for the redevelopment of this area, which is.
So what's to the?
There are three houses here, three houses. And Mr. Coker, is it Eric Coker? He lives in Atlanta, but we've received, he's aware of this. We've presented it to him. We've got emails of support from him. And like I said, Joe and Rosemary lead on this property.
They're a little restaurant house somewhere. They failed. Where?
It was here.
Oh, okay. It's going away. Okay.
It was here, and then Sid's, the tailor, was here. Both of those were vacant and deteriorating.
That building you're pointing to over here, that's leadership building, right?
Leadership is here. And Joe and Rosemary are on the top floor, leadership is downstairs. Hopefully, long-term, our plan, longer-term, when we run here is to, you know, this would be part of our, it'll be our next growth. It's that way.
And the unit is a bridge.
We want a bridge. But the, the, the good thing about, I mean, the necessity for the bridge is, as lawyers, we, and the other thing to keep in mind, this is just, the best way to view this is like a long corridor. It keeps us connected. The nature of our business is, we interact a lot. We interact a lot together. I've got questions, I need to get a lawyer, I need to get a litigator on something, I've got to walk down the hall. It's really the nature of how we do business. It's very important for us that we stay together. We have two very small groups that are out in our research park office, but they're intellectual property lawyers. They do patents.
That's where they need to be.
And they do patents. And then we've got our government contracts group, our government solutions group is out there, just, we have an outpost to deal with our government contractor clients out there. The rest of our group is here. This will only be accessible to our lawyers, our staff. It's not like it's going to be open to the public.
And those parcels behind the property, is there something existing there or no?
There were, but they both, both, the house.
Yes.
Come here. Those are, this is William, this Madison Street, and there are buildings there. I'm not sure exactly what they are.
How many notices did you send out for your board of zoning visit?
We notified everybody within the five.
And how many was that? You have any idea?
I don't know. There were not five minutes.
No. No, I was.
Joe and Rosemary came to the, to the meeting.
Joe and Rosemary?
They, they, the, 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 the,
Comment?
Okay, okay, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, Maple Hill Cemetery Edition, extent. Public hearing was held today. Move to approve.
Uh, any comment, Maple Hill Cemetery Edition, extent? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is the Annandale Trail Access. Public hearing was held today.
Uh, uh, okay, we have a motion. Did, did I, we, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My preference here with the extensive earlier public input would be to move to send this back to committee and further research and explore the other viable option that was mentioned. Now, that's not to take away from the due diligence that the planning staff did in presenting this, but I think in light of the others, I, I think that we, we do owe that to the public.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion to send this back to, um, to, uh, the Planning Commission for additional consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Pla-? Platt Vacation Hawthorne Resort Subdivision, Platt Book 38, page 37. The committee recommends approval of said vacation. Move to approve.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Vacation of Right-Away. Item A, Vacate Portion of Electronics Boulevard in Remington Trail, formerly Penistar Drive. The committee recommends approval of said vacation. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, Vacate Portion of Providence Main Street and Old Monrovia Road. The committee recommends approval of said vacation.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Gary. Is that, I guess we're next on zoning. Let me go. Okay, Vince, would you, Vince Dickens, would you give us the zoning committee recommendations?
Yes ma'am. Zoning Committee Recommendations. Meeting was held on August 13th. Number one agenda item, the Shawty rezoning. Public hearing was held this evening. Entertaining emotions?
Need to approve?
Second. Okay, uh, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, can we see the Shawty map one more time, just for old time's sake?
Ashley, do we have a plat of this property that shows the property lines?
Um, I do not have one. I could possibly pull up interactive maps. The actual current zoning line does follow, um, most of the current property line as well as some of the previous.
Ashley, I don't know if you, if you can follow with the cursor for me. On the, um, Village Road, um, is that, I think that's the same street, right? Village Square?
South Village Square.
South Village Square. This is just a good news story because if we did not, um, four years ago, this was in the county and at some point the, the road was installed, you could just easily move the road around and you'd have a continuous commercial of five acres, am I correct?
Yes.
And you could do whatever. So the only problem with this is really the road and no one mentioned that today. It's the road. If the road wasn't there, whatever commercial entity could pop there without any problems. So I, I think it's very important to add that to the record as to why this is supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments?
Yeah, Ashley, the, um, there are two tracks of C1A there, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And one of them is on the north side of the road and the other's the south.
Yes.
What is the acreage of each?
Um, I do not have the acreage of each on hand, just the total.
All right. Do you know the dimensions of the property of each one?
Um, this particular parcel on the south side of, uh, South Village Square is much larger than this one, but because of the way they're situated now, they appear as if they're smaller in commercial density, whereas this would actually be decreasing the size, but I don't have the dimension of each parcel.
The reason I'm, I ask, C1A, it was brought up that the setback is a minimum of 100 feet from the front yard?
Yes.
What are the side and rear setbacks?
I think it was C1A.
For C1A, for the side, it is a minimum of, uh, 40 for major arterials. And if the property abuts a residential structure, it's a minimum of 20. And in C1, it is a minimum of 15. If it abuts a residential district.
You can, you can place parking in a setback, correct? But you cannot build a structure in the setback. Do we know what the acreage is of these two pieces of property that would be suitable for structures?
As far as buildable area?
Buildable area, yeah.
I don't know, I don't have that information. I think one thing to note is the height requirements for C1A versus C1.
What are, what are those?
So C1A, what's the height requirement, Ashley?
There is no height requirement listed for C1A where C1 does have a height requirement and that is a maximum of, uh, 30 feet if you abut residential.
30 feet works out to be two floors.
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I lived through this down or behind the Kangaroo off of Mountain Gap.
Right.
In that world, they had similar issue going. No, it was not similar. But they had commercial button up again. They want, they'll want for commercial to butt up against residential because the guys couldn't do anything with the land. So it was, and the 30 feet seemed to be, well, it was okay, but, I mean, nobody liked it. But I, the 30 feet was two floors. We've said this in another forum, so it's not like it's new news. But the C1A, if I'm not mistaken, this is the only place left in all of Huntsville that's C1A, correct?
Yes, this is the only C1A district existing in the city of Huntsville, total.
So... Going to C1... I'm trying to determine the, I've heard, the 30 feet as a councilman makes me feel better. But the setback differences between C1 and C1A, I, I have concern over. And I think that's where you were going, I'm not sure.
That's where I was going. We talk about reducing the overall acreage of C1, but in fact, you're increasing the buildable area over what is existing now. We don't know what that buildable area is, but it would be interesting to know so you could consider what, you know, what type of structure might be built there.
However, the, the danger I want to go back to point out again is that if somehow the road were relocated or moved, whatever, as it currently stands with C1A, you could build a skyscraper.
Oh yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. The, the most painful decision of this is you, I'm stating the obvious, but, I mean, we've listened to it all night tonight and we listen, I've listened, I've been working it for two months. If we voted against it tonight, there's still C1A. If we vote for it tonight, there's C1 and it's been moved. And then if it stays, if we vote against it tonight, then there's multifamily and all the other. So it's, it's, whereas, it means it's all or no, it's, it's all or nothing. I mean, it's all one way or all the other way.
I would agree with you. The plus here is the removal of the multifamily.
Right.
And the skyscraper.
Okay, and the skyscraper, I'll give you that.
It's not a technical term here.
Yeah. But when you hear 70% of the residents don't want to rezone, you kind of have to consider that. So they're, that tells me they're taking, they would rather have multifamily, or at least that percentage, would rather have multifamily than have commercial development.
Well, I'm not, they're out there and they're listening, but I got the imprint, opinion is there, my, my, my opinion would be the, there's a word risk in this.
Sure.
The, the risk is, multifamily is he'll never do it. And the risk is, you know, he'll never do commercial 1A. But on the other side of the coin is, the risk is he's going to do something commercial, but they're going to have nice 1, nice 1A.
I, I would agree. The issue is the residents have said they don't want commercial, but they're okay with removing multifamily. And it's like they want it both ways. That's what I heard.
And so without?
And I'm not sure that's, that's equitable.
It's probably not equitable, but I, I want, like I said, remind everyone, if the road were moved, curved around either side of, of the, of C1A right now, we'd have no control over a skyscraper going there. And yes, I know that's extreme for Huntsville. But if that road was relocated today, because there's nothing else there now, so there's nothing that prevents the road from being relocated very easily, it would still be C1A and have the ability to build something there that may be even more unsavory versus moving to, to C1 and a two-story building with, that, with, without metal and without clad siding.
Let me ask another question. Is there design guidelines for this property other than what's in the zoning ordinance? There's no covenants?
There's no architectural review committees for this that I'm aware of. I don't know about deed restrictions.
There's no local homeowners association that has jurisdiction on this property?
It's not. It's because it has not been platted yet. I'm, I'm sure that the developer hasn't, uh, come up with a, uh, homeowners.
Only other thing would be deed restrictions, but that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want y'all to think I'm talking against this, because I'm not, but I just think these are all things to, to consider.
I, I think that, you know, my, my take on it is, uh, that the developer has a huge investment, uh, in the neighborhood already with the purchase of, of the property and with houses that, that he's building and that he plans to build. And, uh, and if he builds something unsightly on the corner, how's that going to reflect? How's, how's that going to help him to sell what he's trying to sell? So I would, I would rely on the developer to use good taste and good judgment, uh, in, in, uh, in what he builds and, uh, in the commercial. And I think that the, that for a developer to voluntarily, uh, give a multifamily, uh, zoning away in exchange for a single-family zoning is a pretty, is a pretty good nod to the community of, of, of good faith.
And Madam Chair, also let's be reminded, the developer did mention that he was relocating to the development. Also that going forward, um, a two-story building, it would be better than obviously the skyscraper that I keep referring to. Um, and hopefully all the residents will, will slow down as they're driving on, on the road now because they now know what the speed limit is. I think we just have to, to be mindful also that the developer did offer, uh, the property for purchase to the, to homeowners associations. And there was not a offer, uh, they did not accept. Um, and so we need to be mindful that, you know, we, we don't want to, um, place any burdens on a property owner and that Alabama is open for business and that we want to be able to, to have things and support businesses as well as our residents.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Mr. Willie spoke to the speed on South Shawty. Um, I would ask the developer to really do some research in the roundabout that we, um, spoke about earlier, as a traffic calming device in that particular area. That would definitely help speed slow down on South Shawty. Also, the well-lit sidewalks that you're, um, envisioning putting in, uh, to the area would definitely allow for pedestrian traffic to travel up and down this narrow roadway and for it to be well-lit, uh, to keep away criminal activity. So some of the things that you have envisioned, I do hope that you would follow up on, uh, should this pass this committee tonight. But definitely that, that traffic roundabout, maybe look at the one out in Providence to see how it's working with, uh, large haul vehicles traveling through that area would definitely be an improvement to what you have now with nothing slowing traffic down on the roadway.
Madam Chair, with that said, I'd like to call for the order of the day.
Okay, it's that a call for the questions, so, uh, we have to vote on the call for the question. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries?
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay. Um, okay, the motion carries, so we will proceed with the voting. All in favor of the South Shawty rezoning as presented tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we, uh, the motion carries with one opposition that I heard. Thank you.
All right, agenda item two, zoning ordinance amendment, non-conforming lots of record. Amend zoning ordinance article 74, non-conforming lots, non-conforming uses of land, non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses of structures and premises. Section 74 dot one, non-conforming lots of record to add definitions and to amend and add regulations concerning non-conforming lots of record and unified lots. A public hearing was held.
Need to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, Sanctuary Cove Four, rezoning, 1417. The committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for September 23.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, Heritage rezoning, 1418. The committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for September 23rd.
Uh, any discussion?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, final item, Providence Plan Development, 0211, amendment. Major change to the Providence Plan Development, PDH, LUI 56, adds permitted uses within the plan development. The committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for September 23rd.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Jim, would you tell us about that, please?
Items one through seven are in for invocation.
I'm sorry?
Items one through seven.
Are for invocation?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank y'all. It's a long meeting and I appreciate everybody being patient.